I'm gonna go ahead and call the, uh...
I mean, I'll sit down.
I'm gonna go ahead and call the Finance Committee to order. Parks and Rec is still waiting on someone to show up, so... If you include the financial update, we got two items before us tonight. The first is the resolution for, uh, to authorize the payment of, uh... A payment on the municipal campus. Kind of a standard thing. Any comment, or?
I move the resolution to be forward to council with recommendation approval.
Say it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright.
It's, and y'all, Jeff, give us some guidance there. We, we went ahead and put that on committee.
Yeah.
Uh, normally, we, you know, we didn't make the change where we won't put it on an agenda, we won't bring it up if it's not on the agenda. Uh, you know, if we don't have the invoicing time to put them up.
I really don't think there's any reason to have a committee meeting on it unless anybody else feels like it. There's hardly ever any discussion on it.
We did make the change that it won't show up on your agenda the day of. I mean, we're, we're, we're holding them if they're not, if we don't get them in time to put them out on the council agenda for that meeting. And that's why we got this one, what, last week, Wyman? I think. And then, so, anyway, we'll, we'll-
Just put them on the agenda and we'll be good with that, I think.
Okay, we'll proceed that way, then.
And then, uh, go ahead and have the financial update as well.
I put the sales tax report in front of you. There are a couple of other updates that I wanted to do, but Laura's still in the process of changing, uh, the reporting from CIP, and so we'll, we'll probably have that at the next committee meeting for you. On the sales tax revenue, uh, you can see that we had a tremendous year. A little over seventeen million dollars came in. I remember last March, um, when discussions of shutdowns started coming up, um, there were some people that were projecting up to a 20% reduction in, in sales tax revenue. Even a 15%, you would've seen just a little over thirteen million dollars come in, and we came in over seventeen. So, um, we appreciate the residents spending their, their, their dollars locally. Um, we had, uh, online sales tax contributed to that. A lot of the building materials, um, we saw a huge increase there. Um, so those were two of the big drivers. Restaurants, um, according to the NAICS codes, uh, restaurants are starting to creep back up to where they were. Um, it's not quite where it should be, but we'll get there eventually, uh, as capacity increases. So, um, overall, Springdale saw 8.31% increase. Uh, the Benton County sales tax, the portion that we received, uh, was a little over eight, and, uh, Washington County was right at eight as well. So, those are our sales tax updates.
So, uh, on the sales tax, the increase that you're referring to is just the 1% sales tax that we collect on the bond, I mean, on the sales tax that we collect, but this Washington County is a separate sales tax, correct?
Yeah, the county collects, uh, their percentage, uh, of sales tax, and then they disperse that among all the cities.
How does, uh, how does that number compare? Oh, I see, it's right underneath it, so it's just up about a million dollars?
That's correct. Yeah, Washington County was up.
7.99.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
So if you average all three of those together, it's 8.16%.
Any questions? If not, thank you very much. Close the finance.
Alright, I'll open up Parks and Rec. We've got one item before us tonight. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction contract for Rabbit's Foot Lodge and appropriating funds, project number CP 2001, and I'll turn it over to Wyman.
We've advertised and took bids-
Pull, pull that mic down a little. Uh, Wyman, will you please?
Our architect has advertised and took bids for the roof repair, and everything that's attached to the roof that has to be replaced at the same time. The low bid was Picket Construction, and we've got some money left in, that has already been designated for the project, plus we've got a grant. So the balance of the funds that we'll need is- Correct.
That's after the grant and the park set aside money that we had, right?
It, Wyman, is this gonna go ahead and, they're gonna replace all the, uh, uh, supports around the porch as well, 'cause half a million bucks is a pretty good price for a roof.
Not in this phase. This is just the roof and what we need to replace at the time we do the roof.
I believe it's the roof-
That's only the structural integrity for the roof alone.
Also the soffit.
Well, yeah.
And I think there's some log replacement in that also.
Right, some of the top logs, it's gotta be replaced when they do the roof.
This is basically Phase 1 plus a little, I think. We, we had it divided up before. And there were two bidders, I think?
Pardon me?
I think we had two bidders.
Right.
I know that, I know that the bottom two, this one was significantly below the next I think there were two.
What wa, what was the original projection for all of the repairs?
All of the repairs was about 1.8. Um, and this, this is Phase 1, I think. I think we'll, I think we'll be able to do it for that, but we'll spread it out over probably three phases. The next one will probably include the porch and ADA compliance. Uh, but we, we will, we'll also, uh, apply for grants for that, too. So, this will allow us, by spreading it out like this, we'll, uh, hopefully capture all the grants we can as well.
What, uh, what does that leave us in the general fund, then, uh, Wyman, if we're taking 361.9 out?
We didn't, didn't calculate that. No, we-
I'm sorry?
We combined the CIP with the general fund.
I understand.
We can get that number by the council meeting date, but I didn't bring that number with me tonight.
There is no more CIP. It's all just the, the general fund now.
Right.
Yeah, I was just wondering what our-
Do you have a ballpark, Colby? Do you remember? I was thinking it was pretty substantial. I know we had three million in CIP designated.
Yeah, I believe that total fund's gonna be around nine million once we can, now that we've combined them, and this'll take this amount out of that, so you're, you're still probably a little over eight million dollars.
Okay, so we still got eight, and really, the CIP, we're just talking about construction-related funds, period. We're not talking about CIP anymore.
Right, that's correct.
Well, see, that's where I get really confused, and, and I know where the new guys are confused.
They may not be as confused as somebody who deals with CIP.
Well, that's true, because, because I've done it for 22 years the other way, and now all of a sudden, we're doing it a different- Basically, we got eight million bucks left.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, but, but is this coming out of what the mayor said was CIP reserve? What used to be CIP reserve, or?
Well, it's combined with the general fund now, so it's just coming out of that total reserve.
There was a portion, Jeff, remember, that we, we put 200,000 in every year for park and land set aside?
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
There was, uh, some of that left that is going toward this to help offset this cost. Uh, so, yeah, that was, that's coming out of a, a piece of formerly CIP that was set aside for parks.
I think the more, more we refer to formerly CIP, the more confusing.
Well, that, that's true, but-
Maybe.
But, the, the bottom line is, we got eight million dollars left out of, out of taking this out of our fund, and I think we're gonna be getting reports showing us what our, our general fund is, and then how much we're spending each time on construction. And then we have the opportunity-
Chris, what do you mean when you say "construction"?
Construction are like projects such as this.
Projects y'all decide to do.
Because the, like, for, uh, street improvements, for, uh, for repairs, et cetera. But we'll be able to see in black and white, and we can stop at any point in time, as I understand it, any of these projected, because they're gonna, they'll propose them to us as they come up, and as they're, they try to prioritize it, particularly like with repairing, uh, streets, et cetera, and then we can determine how we're gonna do it. But really, just looking at one fund, period.
Just so y'all, especially for the new, new council members, too, remember that we're also adding, what, between 200 and 300,000 dollars a month, depending on sales tax that month, to this fund.
But it's, it's just to the, it's just a general coffers, so it's not really-
But it's, but it, yeah, I get that what you're saying, it's the general fund, but aren't we still kind of, you called it "this fund" that we're adding money to?
Yeah, sales ta, as the sales tax, we used to add it to CIP.
Right.
Right?
But it's just going to the general fund, period.
Going to the general fund now, and to that reserve.
'Cause we got an emergency fund, and we got a reserve, is what we have.
Yeah, okay.
So this isn't a budgeted item in the, in the 2021 budget?
No.
Correct. And we'll have other items throughout the year.
And we'll be able to see that, hopefully, each month.
Look at it and say, "Yeah, we wanna spend this, or no, we better not right now."
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
What, Mayor, what, you, you've probably said this before, but what is the ultimate goal with Rabbit's Foot Lodge?
Well, the ultimate goal would be to get somebody in there that will use it and, uh, and put it to good use. I don't think that, I, I really don't think that'll be the city. It, it could be, but we're not gonna get anybody in there to use it in the shape it's in right now. And this, you know, I mean, that, because nonprofits, even if it was a very beneficial nonprofit to the city, nonprofits generally don't have the, the wherewithal to jump into a place and, and, and invest the kind of money that this is gonna need to. Our, our goal right now is to get it into a state where it's well-maintained, and, uh, and, you know, yeah, we could come up with a city use for it, but we, uh, we haven't had much luck yet with, with nonprofits that we've reached out to. They love it, but they don't have the, they don't have the ability to bring it up to the, to what they need to. And so, and, you know, basically, when we, when we purchased that property, uh, that 40 acres, uh, to add to JB Hunt Park, this lodge came with it, and so did a commitment to, to maintain it. I mean, it is a historic structure, and it's on the National Register, and, and so, uh, but these old buildings are expensive, and we'll, honestly, we'll be better off when we get it fixed if somebody will use it, 'cause I think it will, it will remain in, in better repair if, if we are using it every day.
I went out there yesterday looking at it, and there was a lot of people out at the park, using our park, and that was really encouraging to see everybody out there. But I drove up to where I could to look at Rabbit's Foot Lodge, and there's, I mean, was the only, is the only access foot traffic to there?
Well, we have the, we did put an emergency for fire trucks. We did put another emergency. If you turn into the main entrance in JB Hunt Park, you'll see a, a gate, uh, with a, off to your left, heading north toward Rabbit Foot, and it's a, it's basically a fire access road, and, uh, that, that will take you all the way up to the, up to the lodge. You can use that if you wanna drive up there.
So there's also an access off the main road as you're going to the pump station down there. You can turn off there and go to the front of it.
And we will, I mean, I think the long-term goal for, uh, off the greenway, once Rabbit Foot is, is truly a, a place that, that we wanna, the public to enjoy, would be a, a trail from the greenway up to the backside of Rabbit Foot, and also add a, a public restroom up there, some, probably somewhere around where the old milk barn was, which is north of Rabbit Foot. Uh, sewer's available there, and, uh, uh, it'll go in those pipes right across, right across the top of the street. So, that'll work out great.
I think the biggest asset of Rabbit Foot, we haven't even touched yet, and that's that underground spring that used to be the water source for Springdale, and I forget what the, uh, the, there were initially plans to dredge it out, and they were talking about how many gallons per minute that that, that spring still, uh, produces, and it used to feed all of the Springdale Lake, but we haven't done anything with that. And that's a, that could be a tremendous asset in that location.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna commit 'em, but I'll, I'll tell ya, I have had even some preliminary conversations with Springdale Water Utility as a, uh, a use, that was our original water source, and, uh, and, and there may be some partnership there with, uh, some sort of, uh, uh, some sort of facility that would let our, that, whether it's a, I wouldn't call it a museum, but there may be, there may be some possibilities there as well, so.
Yeah, I was just curious to see what the, the ultimate goal was, to spend a, a lot of this money on that. I know it's an historical place, and, and, of course, this was purchased back before, well, I know before six of us were on here, so.
The ultimate goal, and, and I always make the point, the distinction, as I did earlier, we didn't buy the lodge, we bought the land, and here's a lodge with it. But, but, it is a historic building, and it's, and it's a, uh, I think the ultimate goal, Brian, is to have some sort of use where the public can access it, see it, and enjoy it. Yeah. In a short, to, to put it in a short answer.
Do these repairs meet the historic standards?
Yes.
And is that why they're more expensive?
Yeah, well, yeah, of course, when you're dealing with a log structure like that, I mean, you've got some pretty unusual, uh, you can't just go out and get any stuff, right? And so, uh, but it is, uh, they do, but to answer your first question, yes, they meet with the requirements of the, of the historic designation, and, uh, the architect, who we, must've gotten held up, where he comes up from Little Rock, but, uh, Gary Clement, he is the, he is a, uh, I don't know what the term is, Wyman, but he is licensed in that sort of-
A restoration specialist in architecture.
Yeah, he's an expert on this. He works closely, he was very helpful-
Shallow Museum.
He was very helpful in our, in our grant that we received for this, because he's, uh, he works with the, uh, historic preservation a lot. So he was helpful in getting us that $62,000 grant also, that, that is part of, that is going, would be going toward these repairs. I will tell you what, if you, uh, a lot of our, after thinking what Brian said, a lot of y'all haven't seen it, or haven't been able to tour it. Chad can hook you up anytime, and we can, we can take you through that. It's a, it's an interesting, it's an interesting structure, for sure, and Shallow Museum has a lot of history on it.
Mayor, I got a question on this, uh, and it's a speculation, but how normal is it for us to get grants of this, uh, amount?
The, the, uh, parks grant we got?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know, how often, when do we apply for those? Is that annually, Chad?
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh-
Just come back up.
Yeah, hopefully, we'll, we'll be in a position to apply for a grant for, for the next phase, but the amount is, you know, you ask, and, and they divide that up over the, their other projects through the state, so, and sometimes we're competing with another city project. We, we applied for a grant for this one two years ago, and were denied because Fitzgerald Station, that the Shallow Museum had applied for, got a grant. So, uh, you know, we, we can't, we can't be sure we'll get another grant for this next phase, but we're sure gonna try. And the amount is up to, kinda depends on the demand that year.
Any other questions or discussion?
So, Colby, uh, the sooner Laura can start getting those reports to her, to us, I think it would help keep that clear, at least from me.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, uh, I'll make a motion, is, do we have a resolution, or what?
Yeah, resolution.
Motion that we move the resolution forward to council with recommendation for approval.
Alright.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. With that, I will close Parks and Rec and turn it to the mayor.
I'll, I'll kinda let Patsy start us off, and we've got several, thank you, welcome to planning commissioners who are here. I think we've got several here, and then we've got some, I see Gary, uh, Ben, who is it, Roy? I think we've got two.
Okay, and we've got one, two, three-
Dale, Shannon.
Yep. Kevin, Kevin's sitting behind me.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, first of all, we wanna thank you for letting us have a joint work session with you all tonight. I think this is something that we think, as, in the planning department, and the planning commission thinks it's very important, that we all sit down and talk about where we're going with things, and things that are coming up. So you may ask, see us ask for that a couple more times during the year, 'cause we got a lot of things going on. Uh, tonight, we wanna talk about the Form Based Code. If y'all who are new haven't read it, it's very boring. If you can't sleep, I suggest you try reading it, it'll put you asleep, but I can tell you, it has been very effective. If you look at what's going on in downtown, we've seen a lot of good things come out of the Form Based Code. It was adopted in 2017, so we've had a couple of years' worth of experience. Uh, we've had a lot of questions from stakeholders and people just outside of our designated downtown area wanting to know if, is there a way to extend those kind of abilities in some of that area?
So you would say, just to preface that, you would say that it's been well-received, and?
It's been well-received.
Yeah.
It has its challenges, and we've worked through all kinds of things. I can tell you right now that we have not had one single deviation come to Planning Commission, because we've been able to work through all of those plans. The new Little Emma's, uh, project down on, on Emma Street is one of the very first ones, what took us up several months to get through it, but I think we've got a really good project down there. We've worked with the Watson Building and getting apartments put upstairs, and we've got several of those going on. We have some single-family homes that have been remodeled, that have been able to go into downtown. If you look at those, those have gone well, so we, we've worked through all kinds of things, as far as that's concerned. So we started talking about how do we move this forward into other areas, and what we're gonna present to you tonight is an, a way to create a special district. And we have selected two areas that what we consider to be the edge of downtown, one to the north, one to the south, and some ways that we can bring these kind of, of regulations and abilities to develop into those two areas that the property owner has to be, make that decision, okay? So, Kevin, you wanna say anything else before we get into the limit? And then Austin's gonna make the presentation about the selective thing.
Again, thank you, guys, for letting us, uh, work with you all this evening, as far as the joint session. It's, uh, very important to us as far as really having that connection, uh, with the Planning Commission. I think an interesting, it's, it's very interesting to hear as far as an 8.3% increase in revenue. I'd be curious to see as far as, uh, new buildings and, uh, new businesses that are coming to the area, if that's following the same trend as far as that type of growth in there. I suspect it's probably a little bit higher, so, um, those are things that we need to make sure we continue to connect the dots on, on there. But, um, I'm not gonna take too long, because, uh, these guys have done a fantastic job as far as what they have visually put together, and I think you guys will be really, uh, excited to see this. One of the things that I've seen about the downtown area, um, off of Emma Street, uh, I think it's a, you can visually see that, uh, success and progress is being made, but when you get into the residential areas that are starting to be a little bit off of Emma, um, those are the areas that we really have a big focus on. And, uh, what's been interesting is working with some of the local developers in the area, um, a lot of these lots are older lots. They're very, um, deep, and they're very narrow, and it's very difficult as far as the type of footprint that you have to have in those in order to really make things that, um, are conducive for the area, and, um, where you can appeal to multiple types of, um, opportunities. Multifamily, single-family, and really, uh, continue to balance as far as the look and feel of, as far as those communities. And so, these guys, I, again, I think you're gonna really see as far as visually, um, where we're addressing that, and I think they have a, a really good compelling story that, um, everybody can connect to and appreciate as far as what we want to continue to build the future as far as the downtown Springdale area. And so, um, again, thank you for your time. Uh, please ask questions, um, and, um, uh, and that way we can move forward with this, uh, going forward here in the near future. Thank you.
Hey, Patsy, give us a little bit of, and, and to follow up on Kevin's moving forward with it, give us just a-
A timeline?
What do we need for the, what do we need the council to be considering?
Okay. What, what we're bringing to you tonight is the concepts and where we are now. We need your feedback. The next step will be to, to finish the document, which is creating these special districts, and then we will schedule a public hearing before the Plant, Planning Commission at the March meeting, and assuming that we're all on the same page, we would bring it forward as an amendment to the zoning ordinance, so that we can move this stuff forward. That's the timeframe we're on right now. We haven't scheduled the public hearing, because we wanna make sure we got all your input before we actually took it to the public for formal public hearing. And the guys just reminded me, there's a couple, there's a couple of little other things that we want to give you before we get into this portion of it. Coming to the next plant, uh, city council meeting is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to amend the landscaping ordinance, because we've got a couple of issues that needed to be cleared up. We have some species like Bradford pears. We don't want people to plant Bradford pears anymore, and so we're gonna do that first, and then show you some of the changes that we're doing with the application forms to make it clearer of what we're trying to move forward with, and then we'll get into this. And so, Austin's gonna bring that forward. We have a handout for you on the, uh, City of Springdale elective enhancement district is what we're calling a "seed district," okay?
Say that again?
Springdale elective enhancement district, or a "seed district," okay?
Another acronym to learn.
I'd like to face it, yeah, you. We can turn it on, you can do it.
Alright, well, she's saying that I'll go and get started. Uh, thank you, everyone, for joining us. If we haven't met before, uh, I'm Austin Thomas with the Planning Department. So I'm gonna quickly go over some of the changes we've been making internally within the department. First, I'm gonna touch on some of the updates we've been making to our processes. We've updated our applications almost across the board pertaining to things like large scales, non-large scales, replats, any kind of subdivision, all of that, just in an effort to streamline our process and, I guess, promote better communication between us, our consultants, the development community, and, of course, the public. So I, all of that stuff is available on our planning page under Applications and Forms, if you would like to look into that further. We've made some updates to Chapter 56, our landscaping ordinance. Uh, some of these changes we've been aware of for a while now, and we're just going back and making some updates to our definitions and diagrams to make those a little bit more intuitive for our developers as they're going through that process. So you'll see here, we've made some update, updates to Section 5627, Goals and Objectives, just kind of reducing some of the redundancy and the language sections there. Updating some of our definitions here. This is something that we made an update, this is the diagram for the perimeter landscaping. We're updating this based on continual input from our development community. This is one that continues to come up, and we thought that it was time to go ahead and spend a little more time with this diagram, so we've updated this to be a little more straightforward, to the point, and corrected some of the actual language to better meet what's shown in the diagram, so. And of course, uh, it's with a heavy heart that we do bid farewell to the Bradford pear, so, uh, I'll sum that up there. I'll go ahead and get into, uh, for those of you that have heard me speak on this before,
Those changes to the Chapter 56, I can tell you, as far as for the Planning Commission, um, are really important. It's not changing the overall expectations as far as landscaping in these locations, but it's a lot more straightforward. And what we've experienced over the years, Brian, you, you can probably appreciate this, is, is a lot of confusion that causes a lot of variance types of conversations that end up in the Planning Commission meetings. It's not a good use of the time as far as for the developers, the architects, the planning department, and so with these straightforward changes in here, uh, this will help as far as the efficiencies, as far as what does come in front of the Planning Commission. And we've consistently look at, we've been looking at things to, uh, improve as far as, uh, improvements for the engineers, the architecture firms that are coming in, in front of us, and ultimately, the, uh, landowners, uh, but also making sure that we, uh, really appreciate the efficiencies of the department and how, uh, those, those meetings go forward in here as well. So, I just wanted to, to call that out as far as why are we focusing on these things? And I would tell you, it's probably not gonna be the ends. There's probably other things that we continue to look at as well. And why this is important, I'm gonna give you an example. The last two Planning Commission meetings, we've seen nothing less than probably four to six large-scale developments, and so for us to be able to hear that in an efficient manner, and I don't expect that to slow down, I expect it probably to continue to grow, um, you know, I don't mind being here this, as, really, really late, but I don't think all of those attending the Planning Commission meetings had that planned on their Tuesday evening, so, uh, just, just wanted to kinda call that out as far as additional information to that.
Hey, Kevin, on this landscaping deal, was site distance taken into account as you're coming up to an intersection with our landscaping? Uh, we've had some issues with that, and I've been called on-
I believe that one of the items we do review is the required site triangle. Uh, but Ryan's here, he can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that is something that we do review on all projects. There have been some instances, I'm aware of, on particular projects where that became There have been some instances, I'm aware of, on particular projects where that became an issue, and we ended up making some alteration to their landscape. But I think overall, we do try to address that within the review process.
When y'all, when y'all consider that, do you consider, do you consider that a couple of years down the road, or do you, or do you just take what they're putting in now?
We take into consideration the species that's being planted and what the mature growth would be of that, yeah. And of course, you know, at a certain point, there is the expectation for the property owner to maintain the tree to, you know, keep that site triangle.
And one of the areas of opportunity too is especially where you have sidewalks, the root structures. We just need to, we also make sure as far as it's not going to do damage to a paved surface or a concrete surface as well.
Does that, does that answer your question? Okay. All right. So I'll go ahead and move forward into our Form-Based Code discussion. As Patsy mentioned, if you've heard me speak on this before, we've made some updates to the language itself. But we are proposing two specific areas. To the south, we have the Powell Street District, and to the north, we have the Mill Street District. Both of these areas are loosely following the Greenway Trail Corridor. And what we've done is we have combed through these areas and based on the existing character of each one of these parcels and its current use and the structures that are present, we have found the most appropriate designation as it pertains to our existing Form-Based Code. For, some areas are more commercial in nature and have larger setbacks, some are residential. So we've just went ahead and put in these designations. In a lot of ways, these are a placeholder, and they in no way indicate our highest best use for these properties, but it's simply showing what is most relevant currently. So I'll go ahead and move forward. This gives you a little idea. The area that's highlighted in yellow is our existing downtown Form-Based Code area. So you can see these two districts as they would pertain to that, to the north and south. We've done quite a bit of work in order to get to this point, including looking through some reports as it pertains to, I guess, socio-economic aspects, demographics, and the existing architectural character of these neighborhoods. I'll go ahead and move forward a little bit. One of the things we wanted, as you, I guess, begin any process of looking at something like this, is to identify our goal. You know, what is the target that we're looking for here? And as you'll see from this diagram, on the left and right, you have the single-family type dwellings and also the apartments, both of which we're, I think, very familiar with here in Springdale, whether it be duplexes, triplexes, or single-family homes. But I think the real goal here is to focus on this area in between. What we're showing is the missing middle housing. This includes things like courtyard buildings and stacked duplexes, you know, fourplexes, things like that. A lot of these building types you may see in older cities, but we are not as familiar with specifically here in Springdale. And most of the time, the reason for that is that these building types are more difficult to develop in areas with traditional zoning and the setbacks and the size of the lots that are available. So one of the things we wanted to focus on was to, you know, how, how can we promote these additional types of buildings and also promote missing middle housing and creating affordability within these areas? So in order to do that further, we have, this is, created a model in order to look at some of these things. This is actually at the corner of E-Wall and Dodson as it exists today as the aerial image. So what we've done is actually developed a model in SketchUp to look at how this could affect this area based on the build-to-lines and things like that as compared to the existing zoning in the area. So you can see, one of the things I would like to point out here is that within this neighborhood, you can see there are, is a variety of different building types, housing types here. You have a stacked duplex, a fourplex, some carriage houses with dwelling units above, duplexes, stacked duplexes, it goes on, as well as your more familiar single-family dwellings like you see down on the left corner there. And all of this to say and show that these types can integrate very well into existing neighborhoods on the same size and scale, and we can promote some level of density and affordability while still keeping with the existing character and context of these areas. And that's one of the things that we wanted to set out to do when we began this discussion. So as you can see here, we have some stacked duplexes, fourplex, and some duplexes. So this is a street-level rendering to show the possibility. As you can see here, we've brought the actual frontage facades of these houses a little closer into the street. And the idea is that to some level, you are taking back the public realm and promoting, you know, that communal aspect by bringing people closer into the street and having those porches front the street much in the way that they have in the past. And, you know, over time, I think we've gotten away from that with subdivisions, but this is a good way to bring that back and promote that public realm. This is a diagram we put together to show the difference between traditional zoning on some of these smaller lots. One of the reasons we chose these areas specifically and more so in the Powell Street District, you'll see there are very deep, shallow lots, 50-foot of frontage with 125-foot of depth or 150-foot of depth. And it is very difficult to build on these lots under the traditional zoning, which is the reason that we receive a lot of variances in these areas for deviations of front, side setbacks, things of that nature. As you can see here, with a typical home construction that we're most familiar with, a front-loaded garage, it is very difficult to fit a, a home on a lot of this size. So on the right side here, you can see a single-family dwelling that was built under the Form-Based Code parameters for the build-to-lines and setbacks, things of that nature. And as you can see, it actually allows encroachment into that area up towards the street. And it goes without saying that it's much easier to develop this on this size lot than it would be what's shown here on the left. So with that, I'm going to move on to some more commercial properties. This is a property that's actually under design right now for development in the existing Form-Based Code. But I use this example because it's a great way to show, this is a triple-frontage lot. So you can see 30-foot front setback on all sides. And with that said, I mean, you can see how this would really limit the buildable envelope that you have with all those things taken into consideration. And ultimately, it may be that this is not a lot that would be profitable or viable to develop unless we were able to make those changes. But as you can see, within the existing Form-Based Code, the possibility that we have there with that property and the potential there is enormous. And as I said, this is a product that's currently under designed, so, yeah. This is another one. This is at the corner of Powell and James. This is a conceptual rendering that we've put together to show you the possibilities on this particular property. So here we have a mixed-use development. This would be under a neighborhood center type 2 designation. You can see you have the more commercial uses in the center here, and out on the edges, you have those that are more of a residential component. And of course, residential upstairs as well. Currently, in our code, it's important to mention with our PUDs, it's, that is the only place you can actually do mixed-use development currently, but the minimum acreage for that is 10 acres. So, you know, with that, it, these developments are pushed to the fringes to find those larger pieces of property. And this is a way for us to come back to the drawing board and promote quality infill in these areas with one, two-acre lots and even smaller, and, you know, really focus on some quality infill in these areas. So with all those visual examples shown, I'd like to give you guys an idea of some real-life examples and how these may integrate into these neighborhoods. Like I mentioned earlier, we're very familiar with the side-by-side duplex and the two garages on the front. We've seen that plenty, but something that we're not as familiar with is a stacked duplex. So I want to show you guys some examples of this. As you can see, if you're driving down the street, it would, without a second take, it would be rather difficult to see this as anything other than another single-family home. And it integrates very well into this neighborhood, a similar scale, and, you know, it meets the character. Once again, this, this is another good example. It keeps with the character of the neighborhood. It fits in well. If you had not had a trip to this house before, you would probably never know that it was a duplex based on the, the front facade. So this is some examples of side-by-side duplexes. We're, we're familiar with this building type, but we're probably not as familiar with this building type being loaded on the rear or having access to the garages from the back. And there, there are some really neat possibilities and multiple configurations that you would use with these. And I would like to, again, reiterate that these are all options that are possible within our existing Form-Based Code. Here's another stacked duplex. This is actually two, essentially two townhome units connected, so. Fourplexes, once again, keeping with the similar scale to the neighborhood, we're able to integrate four units into, essentially, this could fit on a 50 by 150-foot-deep lot, which is extremely common in a lot of these neighborhoods, specifically in the Powell, Powell District. Townhouses, we have some of these in design right now, as I mentioned. We've had a lot of great luck with these and a great way to boost density, but also, once again, sticking with the character of the neighborhood. And live-work units, these are obviously ones that we would expect to see more in our neighborhood commercial designations along some of the corridors such as Powell, along the trail, things like that, to provide some additional amenities in those areas. But just to give you guys an idea there. Well, I think that's all I have, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over. Do we have any questions?
Have you had any interest on this from developers?
Absolutely. I'm hopeful that we have some of our developers with us tonight, our stakeholders, that can probably speak to that better than myself, so hopefully they'll get a chance to, to speak a little bit on that.
What's been the, police and fire, but especially fire, when we, when we're talking about the setbacks, the changes to the setbacks, have they already been involved in the process? I know we're not the first ones to look at this, so.
Yeah. I, I think they're more than familiar at this point, just from the work that we've done within the existing Form-Based Code. We have had conversations with both parties off the front end, and as far as I'm aware, I don't think we have any, any potential issues that would present themselves. Yeah. In fact, you know, as I said earlier, I think we could eliminate a substantial amount of setback variances specifically by implementing this. These small lots like this or deep and shallow lots are very difficult to develop within our existing zoning, so, yeah.
So I have a couple of general questions. The area downtown that we have now in the Form-Based Code is just called Downtown Springdale Form-Based Code.
That's correct.
District, I guess, or something like that, which is, and you had the three different sections in that picture a while ago. And so now you're, we're looking at adding a district to the north and a district to the south to that, correct?
That's correct.
And then on the front of this, you call it City of Springdale elective enhancement district. What does that name mean? Is it all going to just be referred to as the Downtown Springdale Form-Based Code or what?
No, that is specifically referring to these new districts that would be to the north and south.
This is?
Right. Because it's of an elective nature. They are electing as a property owner to utilize the Form-Based Code.
Well, with these two districts then, would they, do they become a part of the Downtown Springdale Form-Based Code, or are they totally treated differently?
They are different. I think eventually, ideally, they would be included in our downtown master plan at some point. I think we're presenting them today because it is, I think, vital to move forward with this. It's, time is of the essence in this. As we see development kicking up in these areas, we would like to go ahead and, and make this a possibility.
They're all two separate districts, separate from the Downtown Springdale Form-Based Code then?
That's correct. But they directly refer back to the existing Form-Based Code and all of their implementation and procedures. We would treat projects that were presented in these areas in the exact same way that we would within the existing Form-Based Code.
And then you kind of briefly talked about, and I forgot the term that you used, I assume it's these different colors on this.
What's, what's the yellow mean on Mill Street District there? Are those just the single-family homes that stay that way? Exemptions to the district?
Well, as I said, we, when we made those designations, we're looking at the existing nature of the property. So all of those, the ones that you see that are a light cream color, tan color, that is a neighborhood residential type 1, yeah.
And these designations?
But that means they're exempted from this district, or they're part of, what are you saying?
No. When you look at the Form-Based Code, it's the same districts that's in the Form-Based Code, and we're outlining where we think those same kind of districts could go into this area.
Okay.
With current state law, expanding the, the boundaries of the Form-Based Code requires, and Ernest can correct me if I'm wrong, all the property owners would have to be in agreement to expand the districts itself. So what we're doing is giving property owners the option of being able to use what's in the Form-Based Code without having to expand the districts.
Or not use it if they choose not to be part of it.
Or not use it if, that's exactly right.
That's the important thing.
Rather than have to come for variances that would be required if they weren't part of the Form-Based Code.
That's what's important, that you explain to property owners that they don't have to be part of this district. They have an opportunity to voluntarily fall under the guidelines if they so choose, but they don't have to.
That's correct. And basically, if they choose to take this optional Form-Based Code district, it takes it off of the standard zoning classification. It becomes this, and this is how it operates.
It'll be done on a property-by-property basis after this is implemented?
Or a group of property owners could go together.
Yeah.
You could have a whole block that wanted to come in there. It's not restricted in size to have a minimum or a maximum.
It's up to the property owner's volition to determine or not determine to be part of this seed.
That's why it's called selective, so that you can select whether you want to. And there are some developers who will see the, the advantageous nature of being able to use this new code as opposed to the standard, and they will opt to do that. And that's, that's how we work all this, is optional.
So for those who elect to do this?
Right.
Based on, based on how they want to develop and the ability to develop a piece of property?
Correct. And they would come in with an application, like a rezoning, if you were rezoning it to a PUD, it would be an application for a PUD. This will be an application for one of the two districts as a seed, and it has to give us all the details of what they want to do that, and that, that's just a special district that we created for these two additional. Now, we didn't open it up to the entire city. It's just these two areas because we really need to test and see how well that's going to work. And then we may want to move on with something else and we may not. But these are edge, edge areas of the downtown, and that's why we selected those. We didn't even do the full width of the, the district, north and south. We picked out some areas that we thought and have had discussions with developers about, those are the areas they're interested in developing in. Okay?
Yeah, that was my question on why we weren't expanding the Form-Based Code and just expanding it, but.
Well, that, that becomes a different, whole different process with state law, where you got to have 100% of the property owners have to agree to that, and that could take a lot of time. And this is to give that selective nature to people who want to do it in, in those two areas.
A piecemeal usurpation of property rights.
Thank you.
So really, we're here to kind of get your reactions. And I know we're hitting you kind of, kind of quick with a lot of information, but we've been talking about this for?
Four, five months.
I mean, this is not something that just came up overnight. We've been, we've been talking about this for quite some time. So if you have questions, you need to call us, or we need to sit down and talk about it and how we think this can work in other areas.
I think it's a good idea, but just, just to make sure that you communicate with the property owners, letting them know that it's all voluntarily entered into by them or not, and they shouldn't, shouldn't have a problem with it.
And it's the same way with rezoning. If the current property owner comes in and asks for it with the idea that it's going to be sold, once we do that, it goes with it just like any other zoning. And if it has to go back, then we go back. But that's, that's kind of how we get into that, and we're always careful that the property owner and the developer are on the same page when we move this kind of stuff forward.
But Patsy, in, in some way, this could turn out to be a cookie cutter version of this.
Could be.
Okay.
It could create a new model that could be used in other areas, and we could identify some other areas that we may want to move this into.
Even within the district, though, I mean, if a certain neighbor, I don't know, say a certain block all opts into it and the next block doesn't, then, you know, it's just...
Yeah, that's correct. I think it gives us an opportunity to do some really cutting-edge thing and address some development concerns that we've had in the downtown area for quite some time.
Is there a downfall to this? Say, for instance, if your neighbor sells their house, you lose some of your encroachment as an existing landowner, correct? Because you're...
It doesn't affect your property if you did not for it.
Right, but your neighbor can build closer to you, is what I'm saying.
Closer to the street, not necessarily closer on the sides.
Okay.
Yeah. It may be that you have a driveway that goes to the back of the house, and that's where the cars go into it for the garages or parking or something like that, when you're parking all in your front yard.
Right.
And we're just going to have to work through some of kind of this and see if there are some other issues. I mean, it's easy to put something on a piece of paper, and it looks great on paper, but until we start actually getting into it and see how it works, and you may see us come back with some changes. We haven't made a lot of changes to the form-based code yet, but...
My biggest thing is, what are people going to call me, you know, saying this and that, you know, the heads up on those helps?
Mm-hmm. Kevin, you have anything you want to add?
I think you've seen other cities in northwest Arkansas that are starting to appear this way. And the benefit of this is, is that it puts a bit of structure in place associated with it and some vision, but it is still elective in this perspective here. So what I've, we've heard from several developers that they're very interested in this, and some of those developers also property owners in some of these areas, but have really kind of sat on the properties because it's not affordable for them, especially with the building costs right now, for them to move forward with certain things. And so, and I believe it's our last work session that we actually got feedback of developers that came in, and there were some things that they actually challenged us on as far as, I think I heard as far as, let's not move too fast in this whole piece, let's actually try this out. So they were very supportive as far as this elective approach and just really see how that does balance out and how a lot of these current residents react to some of these going into those places in here. But keep in mind as well, one of the points that was brought up is, is that we've got several areas in this, within these areas that have been a challenge as far as an infill of what do we put there? And so this does create additional housing opportunities that, based on the current zoning requirements, do not allow. It's just not worth it for them to come through as far as, you know, what I was talking about earlier with all the variances. That's a significant amount of time and investment of hoping and dreaming that this would go through. This actually gives a lot more options than that whole piece there. So I think, I can speak on behalf, I think, a lot of the planning commission, that this is something that we're very interested in and seeing how it does move forward, especially with these different areas that are a little bit more outside as far as the downtown area that is within the form-based codes. You know, and it also helps as far as, one of the big things people keep saying as far as, man, I wish I had more restaurants downtown. Well, you have to have population densities to really be able to support that, not just in the evenings, but even in the regular part of the day as well. The best place that you're going to get that is from residents that are within walking distance of those locations. And so we have to be able to continue to appeal to that and really take advantage and capitalize on this area of housing that we aren't getting. If you go to areas like Bentonville, Fayetteville, and so forth, you're seeing these types of developments go in, and they're highly, highly successful in there as well, so. But we do definitely welcome your feedback with this.
So Kevin, what I'm hearing is that this really just solidifies some predictability for an investor or homeowner as far as what they can do to alleviate any need to go, not any need, but most needs to go and get a variance. So it's predictable. They're understanding what they can do without having to go see y'all. And I guess in a way, for a developer or a homeowner, you know, they can convey that on to the next, to the buyer or so.
That's correct.
Okay. And I was, if there's any, I think you guys called them out earlier, but if there's any developers here, I'd love to hear back as far as what they think.
Hi, my name's Ryan King. I'm actually not a developer, but I'm here on behalf of the development team I'm working with. Yes. We currently have submitted recently something that is in a review. I guess I'd back up to say, and I know this is not about me, obviously, but it is about my profession and the way in which I interact with different municipalities. I've had the opportunity over the years to work across the United States, and I recently moved back here a couple of years ago. The reason I point that out is because I've had a lot of different experiences, whether it's from Houston, where there's not a whole lot of zoning ordinances, all the way to working in some of the areas in North Carolina, up in the upper Midwest, in Chicago, that I guess I've seen a lot of unintended consequences. And I do support this from what I can see at this point. At least it gives variety and flexibility and a little bit more known on the front end, so. I guess there's a, you know, Springdale, from what I've seen since I moved back, has just, it's just ripe for fantastic opportunities in the lots that are here, and it's well underdeveloped. And, you know, representing stakeholders that are, that may be online there, maybe tuning in through Zoom, but I can speak to say that they have a huge interest in what is being proposed tonight and look forward to working with you all on that.
Good deal.
That being said, would you have any questions, at least from, I guess, the design professional side of anything, how that would impact anything that you guys would see? Thank you. Appreciate it.
I just wanted, Jill with the Downtown Springdale Alliance. First off, I just want to give big props to our planning department. These guys, this is the most professional, hands down, the most professional planning department in the entire state of Arkansas, and I say that with the utmost confidence. I'm just, I'm really proud of them. They're very innovative. And Patsy's been talking to me about this, and I just think it's such a great idea, a great way to bring forth economic development in, that's adjacent to our downtown. We've seen in all of our downtowns, the property values, how they increase. People flock to them, people, old properties that have been turned over or improved, and this just expands that. And I think it's a real asset to the people that own properties in these areas, number one, because a lot of times people's home is their greatest investment of their entire life. And what this does is it gives them an opportunity to leverage that asset to benefit themselves and their family, and it is additive to the community that we're building here. So thank you all very much, and we're, Downtown Springdale is in full support of this, Downtown Springdale Alliance is. Thank you.
Patsy, that's, you'll continue to take input from council members as we move forward through the process, and of course, the public, as you mentioned, will be weighing in on this?
We will. We're going to get the final document together. Ernest and I's got to make sure we got a process that works, and, you know, the logistics of how do you come and apply for it and how do we work forward through that, we're still trying to get all that tidied up. As I said, the idea is to set the public hearing for it at the March meeting of the planning commission, which will be the first Tuesday, and that assuming we get support from them, and at that time, we'd be coming to you the next week. So if y'all have questions, comments, or input, let us know, because we're in the final development stages of moving this thing forward.
Patsy, will this meeting be online? So if I wanted to pull that as a resource to show a developer, then I could say, hey...
I'm assuming so. It's being recorded like any other meeting, correct?
Being recorded, so I bet we can make that happen if it wasn't already.
That'd be very convenient if that's possible.
Ask IT to do that.
Thank you.
And we have those slides, and we have, you know, we can do more of those handouts if somebody needs it or any more of the details as we move forward, too. So, okay. Again...
This just sounds like a way to me, from what I'm getting out of it, is that it's a way that hard-to-develop properties become more developable. And I think it adds some flexibility to our downtown. It creates an area, it's almost, I'm probably wrong in this, but it almost reminds me of the way I imagine cities used to develop.
It kind of seems that way. I don't know.
I mean, you build to what's available. You put a use in that fits what's available. And, yeah, there's planning to it, and there's some structure to it, but I think it also makes for much more interesting neighborhoods where you don't have, where you don't have a lot of things just looking all the same.
And one of the things that we have at planning commission is the fear of the unknown, of what's going to happen. And this gives us a little bit more knowledge of what's going in next to you. It's not, you've heard me say hundreds of times, if you look at a zoning classification and whatever you consider as the worst-case scenario can go in there, that's what can go in there. This kind of eliminates some of that because we know what we're getting, and so I think that's a plus for everybody, too. So, again, we thank you guys. We'll probably be coming back with some more work sessions in the future. We're trying not to hold you too long, but we're here to answer questions, and we've got a great planning commission. These guys put in a lot of time and effort, and they do a really good job, and it makes our job as a staff members a lot easier, too, because we have a good planning commission.
I just want to know where all these charcoal grills are for all these people holding on to these stakes.
They were Christmas presents, Mike. We haven't seen them yet.
Kevin, thanks to you and your leadership, and to all of our planning commissioners. You guys do an outstanding job, and I think, I hope I can speak for all of our council members, especially, you got our new ones on here. We really respect you guys, and I know it's evident because there's issues that come up before sometimes, and the first question is, how did our planning commission vote on this? So y'all's input is very appreciative, and we really lean on that. And to all of our commissioners, we really appreciate all your hard work. And Patsy, thank you for your office and what you do for us also.
We put together some sheets of, what are some other topics that we need to be looking at in the upcoming year? Not that we can't think of enough on our own, but we've got some sheets of, there's some topics that we need to be discussing that we're not discussing, or things that need to change. Rick's been working on the city's app, on the information that's out there. Our job is to make it as easy for the developing community as we can. So if y'all have some ideas of things that we need to look at, talk about, and maybe it's just education, it could be as simple as that, let us know, too.
Kevin, I'm sorry. I had to say that before.
No, that's fine. But Brian, I do appreciate the comments. One of the things that Patsy does for us at the end of every planning commission meeting is give us a recap of what you guys voted for or voted against in some of those regards from, as far as the recommendations that go to you all. Happy to say that a majority of what we put forward to you guys, you're in alignment, and so that doesn't happen without a lot of collaboration. I will invite you guys to really make sure that, if you do have the time, don't expect every month, but there is a lot of activity happening in Springdale. I was just visiting with the planning department the other day. February's not going to be any slower than any of the other meetings on there, so you'll learn a lot if you come to the planning commission meetings. You'll learn about some frustrations, but you'll also learn as far as what is a lot of good opportunities as well. So we always invite you guys to come to those meetings and appreciate your input on that. So thank you, guys, for your time tonight, and I'm always available as well. I think I can speak on behalf of the planning department, too. If you do have developers and stuff like that that we need to visit with, we're happy to make ourselves available to that, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, guys.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. I guess we're, I guess we're out of here. Thank you all. Thank you all.